Good evening, school board members, CCPS families, students, staff, and the Caroline community. I, Kelvin Taylor, Chair of the School Board, would like to call the September School Board Meeting to all. It is my privilege to welcome those attending in person at Caroline Middle School, as well as those viewing on our CCPS YouTube channel. Each provides an avenue for you to receive information, heightened education awareness, and involvement. The School Board is grateful for your attendance as we continue to move our school division in a forward direction as #Caroline. Again, welcome to the School Board Meeting, and now I would like to ask the Clerk of the Board to call the roll.
Jay Kelleher, Student School Board Representative; Dr. Michael Hubbard, representing the Bowling Green District; Mr. Lido Fortune, representing the Matapanah District; Mr. Calvin Taylor, representing the Port Royal District; Dr. Sarah Calverick, Superintendent of Schools; Dr. Jawanda Rollins Fells, representing the Reedy Church District; Mrs. Allison Sears, representing the Western Caroline District; Mr. Sean Kelly, representing the Madison District; and I am Lisa Stevens, Clerk of the Board. Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We would now have words of inspiration by Mr. Lido Fortune, followed by our pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A good evening. Thank you for being present tonight. Before we begin our meeting, I would like to offer words of inspiration. As quoted by Edward Hale, "Together" is one of the most inspiring words in the English language. Coming together is a beginning. Keeping together is progress, and working together is success. Together, families are stronger. Together, teams are victorious. Together, friendships are strengthened. Together is better when unity is a priority.
Thank you. If we could all stand for the pledge led by Caroline High School. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. That brings us to the approval of the September 8th agenda. Our motion is now in order for agenda approval.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in public, second, that we approve the agenda as presented. Ms. Stevens, would you call for the vote?
Mrs. Sears? Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye. And the agenda stands approved as presented. That takes us to achieve 2027 Spotlight. Ms. Tucker.
Good evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the Board, and Dr. Calverick. It is my pleasure tonight to highlight Goal Four: Talent Management. As part of this work, I am proud to introduce members of the Richmond Teacher Residency Team, beginning with Dr. Kim McKnight. They will share the many benefits of this program and highlight some of our outstanding participants who are here, who are making a difference here in Caroline.
Yay! Good evening! I'm Kim McKnight. I have the pleasure and honor of directing the Center for Teacher Leadership in the School of Education at Virginia Commonwealth University. And our flagship program is RTR, formerly known as Richmond Teacher Residency. And we began sixteen years ago, and now we're so thrilled to be in Caroline County. And we have two amazing people with us. We've got Sarah Ryan and Larissa Smith. And I would love for them to talk a little bit... Woo, woo! Oh, good. We're good. Yeah! They already have this applause. I love this. So just to give you a quick overview of what is RTR, we recruit, prepare, support, and retain extraordinary and inspiring teachers for hard-to-staff schools across Virginia. And so by getting your degree paid for, whether it's secondary, elementary, special education, or school leadership, you are working alongside an amazing mentor teacher from the first day of Teacher Work Week until the last day of school, and then making a three-year commitment to the school division. So I would love to turn it over to Sarah and Larissa to tell you a little bit more about their experience.
Hello. My name is Larissa Smith, and I'm an exceptional education teacher for Lewiston Clark. I was approached by my building principal, Ms. Cindy Brown, at the end of last year about this opportunity to work with RTR. And since accepting this and starting this position, it has been more fulfilling than we could have ever imagined. Ms. Brown has talked very highly of the program, and we've been very excited to have Ms. Ryan join us at Lewiston Clark. This program offers that real-time experience that we're looking for. Ms. Ryan is working with students, our curriculum, and collaborating among all of our stakeholders. She has shown initiative, positivity, and commitment each and every day she has come to work with us. And knowing the outcome of working with VCU, and Ms. Ryan has made this a truly invaluable experience for both our school and mostly our students. We have an opportunity with this increased collaboration to build a community of experienced, qualified, and passionate educators. So I'm honored to have been asked to take on this responsibility, and I really look forward to seeing the growth of all of our students and Ms. Ryan as an educator. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Ryan, and I just wanted to say I thank you for allowing me this opportunity to be a part of the RTR program. The real-time learning in the classroom has already shown me to be so valuable. And I have an amazing mentor that already has taught me so much, and she's made me feel included and valued since the first day I stepped into the classroom. So I'm excited and eager to learn as much as I can. Thank you again.
Coming back. You get me one more slide. So first off, can we do a big clap for our resident mentor? Yay! So we say you're only as strong as your weakest resident mentor, and you have two rock stars that are going to be able... And one of my favorite statistics is ninety-nine percent of our mentor teachers that say being part of RTR made them a more effective teacher, which you can already tell. And then the residents have this opportunity to grow alongside amazing educators. So as you can see, as of an overview, we really try to take an integration between the classes that they're taking, and they are spending the entire year here in Caroline County. And then that idea that you get these teachers who are equipped, day-one ready, and they are immersed in the community, and they're making a commitment to you too. So we really love this, and the idea that a hundred percent of our principals say that RTR graduates are more effective, that's what we really want to see. And we just want to say thank you for your commitment. And I will turn it over to our assistant... Oh, I have one more slide. Okay. Oh, yes! Our favorite, retention, because here's the thing about RTR. It's not just about recruitment of new teachers, it's about retaining extraordinary teachers too. And so as you can see with our induction, we really try to ensure that the mentors have a lot of professional learning. How have you felt the professional learning? Good?
Oh, it's been wonderful.
Yes! Okay, that's what we're hoping. Put her on the spot on that one. But it's also an idea that you get to be a leader, and you're growing the next generation of teachers in your classroom. So it's a win-win for schools because you're really getting to have that next generation in the classrooms of your leaders. And at this point, I will turn it over.
Thank you so much. And we are so excited to be able to partner with Caroline and for the hard work that they have done with us to be able to offer three different pathways. And so we're able to support aspiring teachers that have their associate's degree and would like to earn that bachelor degree. And they actually get to spend two full years in Caroline County with a rock star mentor, learning. So they're really ready to go. We also offer and partner on graduate-level programs where we can prepare special education, elementary, and secondary teachers in the subject areas. And then something else we also do is we recruit our VCU students who are in their senior year at VCU. And if they are planning to come back to Caroline, maybe they grew up in Caroline or want to come teach in Caroline, then they're actually able to come do their senior year as a residency, that full year, in Caroline County with their mentor teachers. So... And then, yeah, recruitment. It doesn't matter. All right, so we are really excited. We have got to talk with Paige, and she's been so helpful. To our application is open. It opens September 1st. So we are actively recruiting for aspiring teachers who want to be in Caroline. We offer information sessions that are on our website. So you can join and hop into live information sessions. You can schedule one-on-one meetings with like me or recruiter, someone from our team. We're happy to join anytime to talk about our program. And then we're also looking for potential mentors, those amazing teachers that are in Caroline, those Ms. Smiths that are there that are willing to support a resident and someone who will soon be a colleague for them. So that application is also open. And you can check out our website at teachRTR. Our amazing recruiter, Sabrina, is here. She pops in and comes to career fairs and job opportunities, any community events that are occurring in Caroline, so we can try to recruit from within as well.
And Sabrina's got flyers if you have any questions.
Thank you. Yeah, you're good. Thank you. RTR is a fun bunch, if you didn't know. All right, thank you, RTR, for sharing about this amazing partnership. And I just want to finish tonight with giving you a preview of the work we are doing to develop a comprehensive system of career pathways to support the professional growth of our employees from classified staff to instructional personnel. So for paraprofessionals and long-term substitutes, teacher licensure programs such as RTR and IT are already in place to help employees earn licensure, strengthen retention, and build internal recruitment pipelines. We are also exploring additional pathways, including a teacher-for-tomorrow teacher program as well. For instructional staff, advancement opportunities include serving, of course, as department leads or chairs. We have lead-mentor teachers or instructional coaches, and these options, of course, are already in place. But we are also launching a leadership cohort in 2026 to prepare the next generation of school leaders. And we're excited because for our operations staff, we are currently collaborating with supervisors and directors to design certification stipends and supplemental pay opportunities. This will recognize employees who pursue specialized training and certifications that strengthen their skills and directly support school operations. And finally, beginning in 2026, we're also expanding opportunities through a professional development ladder for instructional staff with potential salary increases for completing micro credentials, earning endorsements, and pursuing additional coursework. Of course, our staff already receives stipends for college coursework, and this initiative will formally expand those opportunities. And we are excited to do this in partnership with our teacher advisory committees and support staff committees to ensure the ladder reflects employee needs and fosters meaningful growth. So together, these pathways demonstrate CCPS's commitment to building a culture of continuous learning, leadership development, and professional advancement for all employees. And I will take any questions, and of course, if you have any questions specifically for RTR, they are here too.
Certainly, I will give Board members an opportunity to ask questions. But just like to say in the beginning, thank you. Thank you for being here, and thank you for enhancing our educational program. I would just say that education has changed tremendously over the years, and there are new things, and we have to find new ways to meet the problems that come along with teaching. And this is something that's helping to do that. So I applaud you for what you do. I thank you. And we are looking forward to a nice relationship with you in helping our school system. Having said that, are there Board members that have concerns or questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, I have a comment and a question. I'm excited, and it's so good to see you. I'm gonna give that public shout-out. That makes my heart really happy because I get to see her every morning. So Teachers for Tomorrow, I was glad to hear about that because I'm listening for the pipeline.
Yes.
So it looks like we're on that. And then the question is with... When teachers do their self-evaluation and they identify professional goals for themselves, is this where that data ties into, "I'd like to be a teacher. I'm currently a par educator. How do I get there?" Is that how the self-evaluation connects to this process?
We can certainly use that evaluation to connect. Are we doing that currently, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry.
No, go right ahead.
Yeah, so we will use those evaluations. And again, as I mentioned, our teacher, our support staff advisory and our teacher advisory is really going to help guide that work in terms of what those different pathways should be.
For clarity, the goal-setting process is the ideal location for the career ladder conversation and skill-set list, where you would be sitting hip-to-hip with a licensed educator who has goals, and you would have a list from the career ladder of opportunities that you can plug in. Where we are not currently doing that, which I think would be a great enhancement if this is what you are suggesting, would be for our non-licensed faculty. Because the power of that goal-setting process could be more robust and could lead to greater growth, both personal and professional.
Absolutely. Great idea.
I have a couple of questions. The first, I think, that I don't believe I heard, but Dr. McKnight and Ms. Tucker, I think it's really important for our Board to understand the grant that we've received and exactly what role we have our resident in, how that's being paid for, and then the coursework component that's included. And then what does it look like beyond the life cycle of that grant?
Yeah, absolutely. You want to come talk about the one grant? But I will say, so Ms. Ryan is a paraprofessional. She is employed as a full-time paraprofessional at Lewiston Clark. However, she is only there for three days a week. And then the other two days, Mondays and Fridays, she is doing either at VCU or working on her VCU coursework.
Yeah, so you all received fifty thousand dollars from us? Yes, fifty thousand, woo! And so that's gonna pay for to get a free degree. That's what we love to see, and we would love to continue this partnership with you. And we are named in the General Assembly. That's where these funds come from. We are earmarked for teacher residency money, and with that, there is a cost share. That's one reason we really appreciate your commitment to this work, to help pay for the mentor stipends, as well as the training costs. And so that is just year to year. We would love to continue that with you. Did I answer that? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question. So if you could put the call to action in two sentences, what does staff need to hear, whether mentor or aspiring? What do you need for this program to continue?
Aspiring, I mean, it's free tuition, as well as just really, having worked with RTR for several years now in current divisions, really the best way to become a teacher, side-by-side with a master educator, learning every day. And I have been fortunate enough to see what that does. It really does transform schools and communities. I know that was longer than two sentences. I'm sorry.
That's okay. So you need mentor teachers?
We do need mentor teachers. It is a nice stipend that they receive as well, but they also receive just above and beyond training and how to be a master mentor, a master mentor teacher as well. So again, it's another pathway for us as well, for our master teachers.
Outstanding. I'm helping you make the plug. If you're a current teacher and you want a mentor, we need mentors.
Absolutely.
And thank you again. I'm a huge fan and advocate of that. I have mentored twenty-two teachers in my career, and they're all still teaching. And so thank you for the work that you do.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Brown, my favorite recruiter, who has really been leading the charge in her school as well. And Ms. Haley, with all her help as well. Thank you.
But Hubbard, I believe...
Yes. Two things. One, the enthusiasm. I mean, we're gonna get you on the cheerleading squad around... But I applaud that, and we need more of that in this discipline. So I commend you for that and keep it. VCU is a state-supported institution of higher education. And as you know, we're all fighting for dollars from the Commonwealth as we go forward. I'm glad to hear that we have fifty thousand this year and fifty thousand for the next, what, three to five years? Is that correct?
That's...
That's... Well, how, you know... Sustain... I'm always kind of concerned about sustainment and how we're gonna be able to keep going forward because it sounds like a tremendous program and a worthwhile program. So what's the vision? He's saying, "Get me out of here," is what he's saying.
So what I would say, the good news, the Teacher Residency Grant was started eight years ago. And so within the General Assembly, it's really been a bipartisan-supported legislation because it really is a way to recruit and retain extraordinary and inspiring teachers. So even though, yes, VCU is a state institution, this goes directly to RTR. So the line item itself, and it has increased every year for the past four years. So the good news is we continue to see a rise. We know, unfortunately, in a national teacher shortage, we are continuing, and we see a lot of support, and people seeing the importance of investing in pre-service teachers on the front end, as well as the mentorship. So I hear you on the state institution. The good news is that this is specific to this program that is housed within VCU.
And key is you're showing the return on the investment, and everyone can see it. So, good job.
And we've been able to show that with our student outcomes. We have that with our retention. Both our new teachers, as well as our veteran teachers, continue to say this. So we appreciate your investment, too.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just, I wanted to say that I know as a Board member, we've tried to be creative in ways of beating the bushes and finding staff members. I applaud you, Paige, for doing that. But I know from like the A1 visas to the RTR program, to growing your own and planting those seeds. As a School Board member, I'm pleased to see that we're doing things to get and retain good, quality staff. And I like the steps that we're taking. As a parent, Teachers for Tomorrow, my daughter was in that program and started student teaching last week. And it was like, those seeds were planted, and now it's like she is... So thank you as a parent and as a School Board member for all the work that everybody does. And say this to any parent out there that's listening, it is a great way to open some doors for your kids that you may never thought about, and then they can come back here. And trust me, she is a hundred percent invested in Caroline County. And I've already told you this, like, she's probably gonna be knocking on your door in like May looking for a job. But anyway, thanks for all the staff and everybody. Don't worry.
January.
But anyway, thank you again for all that you're doing, for the creative outside-the-box thinking and getting our own people and working with them because we have some great assets and some untapped resources in Caroline. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again. We very much appreciate what you do, and we're looking forward to continually working with you. This brings us to our Board Committee Updates, unless you would rather do it when we do our Board Comments. I mean, if you want to do them now, we could.
I'm in favor of wait. We have not had any meetings yet. So I'm okay with moving it to later for anybody else's.
All right, thank you. Well, then that takes us to the recognition portion of our Board Meeting. We are about to enter the recognition portion of the agenda. We enjoy having an opportunity to recognize staff, students, and community members. We ask that you remain seated until all recognitions are complete, and then the Board will pause for a quick break for anyone who would like to dismiss. So as I said, that takes us to recognition. Dr. Calverick?
Good evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, and members of the Board. Exposure to art is critical to the development of every child. Art not only teaches students how to express themselves in creative and individual ways, but students who participate in regular art-related activities perform better academically, develop greater confidence, and sharpen their fine motor skills. Beyond these benefits, our education promotes problem-solving, critical thinking, perseverance, growth mindset, collaboration, focus, and accountability. All power skills CCPS graduates need to be three E-ready: enrolled, enlisted, and/or employed. In cooperation with CCPS art teachers, I have the great fortune of recognizing one student every month with a certificate of honor for their individual artwork. The student's art will be on display at the School Board Office for the remainder of the month, but they promise that we will return it to its rightful owner. Ms. Bolt, art teacher from Caroline High School, will now come forward to introduce our September recipient of the superintendent's... our September recipient of the Superintendent's Student Art Honor. Ms. Bolt, please come forward to the podium at this time.
Good evening, board members. Today I have the honor of sharing Ariella Arbitrario's artwork. This is a self-portrait she did last year in Art II. Ariella is a junior this year. She's in my AP art class now, 2D, 3D design. She's also in the National Art Honor Society. She is in the Color Guard. She is in the Theater Program as one of their costume designers. So Ariella's got her hands in a lot of different things. She's very creative, very expressive with color. She's a joy to have in class, always a go-getter, excited to work. And that's it.[652.96][652.96][applause]
I wish I had the enthusiasm that Dr. McKnight has. I'm like, I like, bring some pom-poms. Yes, we're going to honor AP scholars. You're starting the trend. All right. Good evening, Chairman Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. I'm honored to be here tonight to celebrate some of our amazing high school students. And just to note, this is around AP scholars, and we just honored a, one of our new, we've just last week or last month voted on having the AP art added to our program of studies, and we have a student here who's part of that. Anyway, I love when things are connected. Today, we're, Dr. Connolly couldn't join me tonight as he is at Colonial Heights with our student athletes, our football team, but it is my honor to really celebrate the academic excellence of these students. Unfortunately, many of these students are in college right now, so they are our graduates of 2025, but we do want to honor those that could join us tonight. Every fall, the AP program recognizes high school students who have demonstrated outstanding college-level achievement through their performance on multiple AP exams. The following students have been recognized as an AP Scholar. The AP Scholar Award is awarded to students who score three or more on at least three AP exams, and three is a passing score on a scale from one to five. So our students this evening, here, excuse me, for AP Scholar, we have Tamara Dillard. Javon Morris. Micah Williams. Or, or Michael Williams.
Good job, Father.
We also have students that were recognized as an AP Scholar with Distinction. The AP Scholar with Distinction Award is awarded to students who average a minimum of 3.5 on all of their AP exams and score three or more on at least five of these exams. And that, our student tonight, who is here, is Alex Gregory. Oh, Alexis, I'm sorry. Alexis Gregory. I have one more, one more. Sorry. These students aren't here, but I just wanted to recognize that we also had students that were recognized as AP Scholar with Honor. And an AP Scholar with Honor Award is awarded to students who have averaged a minimum of a 3.25 on AP exams, and again, have scored three or more on at least four of those exams. We had two of those students that are in college now. So let's give one more round of applause to our students.
I hope that I missed, I did not take a moment to sidebar to recognize Michael Williams. He is currently a coordinator of exceptional education and, what is his name again? The director of exceptional education at VCU. So while we're doing your gift and talent, we still have you as a parent, and you have left your mark. Thank you.
And that almost concludes our recognition. There is one other thing that I want to mention, other than the fact that congratulations to all of the students and all being recognized. I would like to congratulate our superintendent, and I'll tell you why. She's wondering what I'm going to say. But there is something called the Cook Center for Human Connection, and our superintendent was a part of a podcast that I was very impressed with. It, it, there were a number of people, obviously, that do those podcasts at different times, but she was the guest, and it talked about her experiences and her path to the superintendency. Very, very impressive. And if you would, do you, would you just take a minute to just talk a little bit about what the process was and, and, and how you were, I guess, honored in the podcast? See, this was happened when you put them on the spot.
Well, first and foremost, thank you so much for taking a moment to pause and recognize the honor that Cook Center bestowed upon me. I was fortunate to be asked to participate in a national leadership series, and we work with full transparency with Cook Center. We provide parent coaching. If, if there are parents in this room and you read the newsletter, you know we inundate you every single month with parentguidance.org resources. And so I've become very familiar with the organization, and I'm very passionate about ensuring that parents have tools in their toolbox. And so as they develop additional leadership tools, this is one way for them to share goodness throughout the nation, and they have had the opportunity to spotlight superintendents, and I feel very fortunate to have been included. And it was just released this past week, and one of my students at University of Richmond said, "Dr. C, I listened to your podcast and I felt famous." So thank you.
Thank you again, Dr. Calverick. And again, we do appreciate what you do, and we recognize the importance of having you in our system. All right, there's one more recognition, I believe. Dr. Neighbors?
This is when Dr. Connolly does such a much better job than I do on this. Give him all the credit. Just looking at notes and looking at our certificates, we miss somebody who's here, and I hope it would be okay that we can recognize him tonight.
Absolutely.
So if we can have Kyle Bain, you get to see him come down all by yourself to the front. And he was an AP Scholar with Distinction. Is there anyone else I missed? I, Kar, um, Cariana Carroll? All right, come on down. We have an AP Scholar with Honor. She's a class, do I have another one? Okay. Congratulations. Thank you to the parents here to support and all you've done to help your students' success.
Again, thank you for the recognition. Our students are very important to us, for they're the reason we're here. So we appreciate all of the accomplishments that they've achieved, and it's always good to honor them. All right, that takes us to information from the district. The Bowling Green Elementary School trailer update, Chris Caldwell. Oh, and it's Learning Cottages, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. I'm pleased to stand in front of you to present the final update for the Bowling Green Modular Classrooms. Villas. This all started in, on May 6th, when we had a special-called school board meeting where we conducted a workshop to address the needs of Bowling Green Elementary School and get direction. On May 27th, we had a joint board meeting with the school board and the Board of Supervisors. Board of Supervisors at the time, we were, awarded us reversion funds in the total of $994,607, which was just shy of our $1.2 million budget. On May 28th, we began work on the site plan. On June 2nd, we ordered our modular classrooms. July 1st, we conducted a pre-application meeting with RRMM and Caroline County Planning Department. Site plans were sent to prospective contractors on July 7th. July 8th, site plans were received and, and applied, CCPS applied for permits. On July 8th, we also conducted a meeting, had a, held a meeting with Caroline County Building Official at the time of the application for the permit. July 8, 28th, we began installing infrastructure at Bowling Green Elementary School. This was the day after we had a call from the building official stating that the permit would be ready for pickup on the 31st. July 30th, the modular classrooms were delivered. July 31st, we started our setup of the modular classrooms. August 12th, all infrastructure was completed. August 13th, REC was able to provide power to the modular classrooms. The last round of inspections were August 14th, we had the foundation inspection, a firewall inspection on the 18th, strapping inspection on the 22nd, final inspection on the 25th. We conducted a final cleaning and waxing on August 21st. Skirting began installation on August 22nd. And we received our certificate of occupancy on August 26th. Teachers began moving into their classroom on August 28th. This slide represents some of the final touches that were going on in the month of August, from fencing to keep everyone safe around our infrastructure, to the final installation of the skirting. At this time, we are still awaiting eight pieces of metal to finish the skirting, which should be conducted in the next two weeks. The teachers started setting up their classrooms prior to the Labor Day break, and this is what they looked like. They were very warm and pleasing and welcoming. On Tuesday, August 2nd, our Bowling Green Elementary School second graders were welcomed into their new classrooms for the first time. There was lots of smiling faces and happy students as they entered into the building. On Wednesday, August 3rd, we conducted our official ribbon cutting ceremony at the new Bowling Green Elementary School Villas. This project goes into the books, is being completed in 93 calendar days from funding to move in. We appreciate the commitment from both the school board and the Caroline County Board of Supervisors, our contractors, CCPS staff, Rappahannock Electric, Caroline Planning Department, Caroline Public Works, with their cooperation to expedite this project for our Caroline County Public Schools students and staff. Like to thank you for your attention and answer any questions that you might have.
What members have questions, at the same?
Sure. No questions. Dr. Hubbard? As I pointed out, let me commend you for your leadership through this 93-day, calendar day achievement. It was, it was a lot. But what you've demonstrated is the ability to work together when everyone is focused on mission. And at the end of the day, mission was accomplished. So I commend you for your leadership in this capacity. Now, I can't let anyone escape without asking, what was the final price tag?
I pretty much know the number off the top of my head. It is 1.093.
So we are?
Might be a dollar or two off.
So we're under budget? Spot on?
We received the 900 and some thousand dollars, 994. So we were over budget by the 100 grand.
Okay.
From what we were actually appropriated.
Okay.
But under budget from what we originally scheduled in looking at all the estimates. So, over budget, or under budget, but overspent based on the appropriated funding that we received.
Got it.
May I ask a clarifying question to tack to that? Can you, and please correct me if my understanding is wrong. We estimated this to be 1.1, am I right about that?
We had three options. I think this particular one of buying it was about 1.1 million.
Okay. And that was what we requested? Okay. I think that's important when we talk about overspending or underspending. We asked for 1.1. What was appropriated to us was the 990.
Correct.
And then we absorbed the difference to make sure that the project happened. Is that correct?
Correct.
Wonderful. And thank you both for your work and, and everybody. And I'll save my words and just say I agree with Dr. Hubbard. Thank you so much, and thank you to all who helped with that project. But I want to be very clear about the math and the money and how that worked. Thank you.
But, did you have questions or comments?
I do just have a few comments. I would be remiss not to take a moment to talk about the fact that a school division never aims to under-promise and over-deliver, but oh my goodness, if you could have recorded the comments of not only board members, but community members and parents and students who were elated as they walked the halls during the ribbon cutting, students talked about how they had, over Labor Day, been thinking about this and how happy their hearts were. They've mentioned that it smelled like Lowe's or Home Depot. They were excited about the newness of everything within their learning environment. And so I want to be sure that that emotion alongside the facts is captured because that qualitative component is equally as important. I also think it's very important to reiterate the power of collaboration. One of the vendors who was intimately involved in this project, when he came to the ribbon cutting, was speaking directly about Mr. Caldwell and Mr. Caldwell's ability to accelerate the timeline like nothing he had ever experienced before. And he indicated that Chris had a talent for pulling together various vendors in an extremely tight timeline that they had never experienced before. I would like to say I don't want to repeat that timeline, but to know that we have the workforce on our staff that can make something of this. that can make something of this enormity happen is just really exciting. But not only Chris, but the people behind him, Bradley Griffin and the maintenance and custodial team lifting the summer work while Chris was able to keep his eye on the prize and the technology team and the safety team of one who came in behind and really put the bells and whistles into the learning villas to make sure that our students were ready to go and our staff felt heard, seen, and valued. So thank you on that, and you have earned yourself some vacation time to go to Maine to be with your father. So shout out to you and your team, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
And again, thank you again, Mr. Caldwell and your group for all of your help. When you wait until last to speak, all the good things have already been said. But I do echo everything that was said, and again, we appreciate the willingness to work together. And I guess I'll close by saying, if this could be done this summer, I don't think it's ever been as hot as it was this summer. And we braved the heat and all the other things that went along with it, and we were able to get the job done. And that's tremendous, and we thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to ask just one question, I apologize.
Certainly.
Once again, kudos to you, Mr. Caldwell and your entire team. Just one quick question, based on your experience in this process, are there any best practices that you've learned regarding anywhere from timeline to execution that would be beneficial if we have to replicate this in the near future?
More time. This is typically at least an 11-month project. Just to put some retrospective to where, you know, where we went with this project. We were working with a brand-new building official as well, so now we know the ins and outs of where we need to be working with Jason, the new building official, so.
Okay, so 11 months would be a comfortable timeline if we would be in a position to have to potentially install modular trailers, i.e. villas, etc.
Yes, can be done in a shorter amount of time, as we know, but a site plan typically, you know, full set site plan would be three months is what we would look at. Working with RRMM, we were able to turn that three-month site plan in three weeks.
Okay, great. And I think that information is beneficial for our board to consider as well as our counterparts on the supervisors, so thank you.
I will piggyback off of Mr. Fortune's question. I have reached out to Leon Hughes, who is the Planning Department for the county, and I have requested but not yet had a response that I have yet seen. Regarding our October meeting, I've asked for him to come and present an update on housing developments, and I've also asked for our team to present simultaneously information associated with Lewis and Clark Elementary School. So that should that need present itself with that data analysis and Mr. Hughes's presentation, we will have a level of readiness to then work side-by-side with the supervisors to lift this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, we appreciate all that's been done. That takes us to information assessment calendar and board updates. Mr. Mudd?
Good evening Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, Dr. Calverick. This evening, we're sharing with you our quarterly plan to keep you updated on student performance data throughout the school year. This summer, we engaged a focus group to review our division assessment practices. The group included teachers, administrators, and division staff. We reviewed state and local assessments and made tweaks to the number of assessments we administer and how often they are administered. We used this assessment calendar to create a quarterly data reporting timeline for the school board. We will be intentional in differentiating our reporting so that the updates you're receiving are timely updates as data becomes available throughout the school year. Where applicable, we will make connections from the data to the performance framework. Our first check-in will be at the October school board meeting where you can expect to receive an update on what should be by that time the publicly released 24-25 performance framework, which will, that update will also include our accreditation status for schools and the division. We will also be sharing fall kindergarten VKRP data and the Virginia Growth Assessment data at that time. In October, you can also anticipate a review of CCPS individual school-wide plans. These plans have currently been drafted and school leaders are awaiting the final release of 24-25 data and the performance frameworks to put the finishing touches on their plans. And that concludes our update and student performance data sharing plan. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do board members have questions concerning the plan? Thank you very much, I appreciate as always what you do, Mr. Mudd. That takes us to information, monthly revenues, expenditures, and ADM.
Good evening Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. Dr. Farley is under the weather tonight, so I will be stepping in and doing the financial report for August of 2026. So for our revenues for the month of August, we are at $3.3 million for operations, $89 million for special funds, or $3.4 million for the month of August in all revenues. Year-to-date, we're at $10.05 million for our operating revenues, $187 for our grant revenues, or $10.7 million. So we're at 14.58% of the budget. For expenditures for August in operations, we are $5.4 million. Year-to-date is $7.9 million, or 12%. And then for our special funds, we are at $715,000 for the month of August, $875 for the entire year, or 10.84%. So our year-to-date expenditures for all funds is $6.1 million, or our month of August for all funds is $6.1 million. Our year-to-date is 8.7, and we're at 11.89%. We are gearing up very quickly for our deadline for the annual school report. The annual school report, we have received an extension through the state for it to be due on September 30th. It does take a monumental amount of hours to complete that from multiple staff members, and we will be working over that the next several weeks. Upon completion of that, then we'll have the auditors onboard. We don't have that set date yet, but they will be back typically in the first couple of weeks of October to work on that with us. So that is our financial report at this time. And one update on county reports, we have preliminary reports through May from them, and we are working on reconciling them with the assistance of their finance team and their county treasurer's office, and their retired county treasurer is also assisting with us. Any questions on the financial report?
Okay, board members have questions? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Okay, I'll move into the ADM report real quick. Of course, we've only had for August, so 14 days. We came about after scrubbing our numbers and looking at, we're at 4343.50. Keep in mind, we budgeted at 4340. However, off of that 4343, we do remove our CSA kids, which we currently have 33 of those students, and we will remove our CISTNA Regional Special Ed students out of there because we receive different funding versus ADM funding for those. The application is due on 9/30 for those CISTNA students, so once we land on a number, we will be reducing that out. And we do know our ADM number is projected a little bit higher. I did not reduce it at the end of the budget process, so we will continue to monitor that throughout the year. 14 days in, and I have no concerns at this time. Any questions on the ADM report?
Questions on the ADM report?
I just commented Caroline Middle School has over 1,000 students now. Wow, that is, that is just a lot of kids in one middle school.
Yeah, we've been hanging around 989, 999, now we've, now we've tipped that thousand.
It was 977 in March, but over 1,000, so it's just a lot.
There is a lot.
Other questions or concerns? If not, thank you, Ms. Stevens.
Thank you.
That takes us to the consent agenda. The approval of school board minutes in August, approval of head start, financial report, approval of monthly bills and financial reports, September homeschool report, September religiously exempt report, and approval of donations. Are there any items on the consent agenda that board members have questions about? If not, we can approve a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second that we would approve the consent agenda as presented. Ms. Stevens, would you call the roll?
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Bells?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye, and the consent agenda stands approved as presented. This takes us to the citizen comment period. The Carolina County School Board welcomes public comments during regular meetings and public meetings. Speakers may address an item on the board meeting agenda or an item not on the agenda during this time. All comments should address a matter related to Caroline County Public Schools. Each speaker may speak for up to three minutes. Once you see the red light on the traffic light positioned in front of the clerk, please make your last statement. The school board chair is responsible for recognizing all speakers, for maintaining proper order, and for adhering to the time limits stated below. The chair is authorized to stop and/or have removed any speaker who uses language that is obscene, constitutes fighting words, true threats, or solicitation to commit crimes and incites imminent lawless action. More, the chair may stop and/or have removed any person who disrupts the orderly functioning of the meeting by making loud, boisterous, or threatening comments. Once you come to the lectern, if you have not signed in with the clerk, please complete the appearance request from state form, from state and your, I'm sorry, request form, state your name and your district. At this time, the clerk will call those that have signed up prior to the meeting.
I am Lisa Stevens. I'm a resident of the Mattapona District, and I'm speaking on behalf of Bowling Green. I am a grandmother of a child who is in the villas, and I just want to say thank you. The villas are amazing and wonderful, and, but I also am coming to plead to you as a resident that we don't accept that that's where we go from here. We are, we worked really hard as a school division when I was in school to get rid of our trailers. And we, I was at Lady Smith Elementary, and we had seven trailers behind the school. And we loved them, and we learned in them, and we were appreciative of them. But that was not the goal we wanted for our school division. So I ask that you continue to go to our Board of Supervisors and demand that we have adequate facilities for our students, for all students. Because even though the trailers are wonderful, and I'm very appreciative, it's not accessible for all students to be in the same kind of, they should be in the same building. And so I ask that if we're gonna follow our goals, that we need to give accessibility to all students in the same way, in the same manner. So as we're looking to Lewis and Clark and adding on trailers there or learning villas, I also ask that we really, really push for an elementary school. We need to separate these, and we need to get an elementary school so that our students are learning appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Stevens. Are there other persons in the audience who would like to speak at this time? Are there other persons in the audience who would like to speak regarding this matter or any other matter at this time? Seeing no one with the desire to speak, I will now declare this part of the session closed. And again, I would, and we normally don't comment, but I just feel like the board is saying we are not accepting learning colleges as the final method to address student needs in this county. We did it because there was no other choice at this time. Given the circumstance that we were in, this was the only means to address the space issues that are with us now. But certainly, it is a way to address needs presently, but it is by no means a long-term solution. Okay, having said that, we will move on to our next agenda item. And that is action, action wave one, approval of the courses in the exceptional education students.
Good evening Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, Superintendent Dr. Calverick, and members of the school board. Rachel Wheeler and I are here tonight with Ms. Branch to present two new courses to include in our school year 25-26 program of studies. Each new course will be shared to better understand this request as the school starts and request to waive the first read. These courses have been reviewed with the appropriate staff. We'll just shuffle everything around. Most importantly, we want you to note that these courses support our Achieve 2027 strategic plan, and we want to make sure we're highlighting that we are preparing all of our students to be 3E-ready. The first course is going to be called Career Skills, and this is a course for grades six through eight for students receiving functional academic skills. This course is designed to build pre-vocational skills and prepare students for greater independence in high school and beyond. Through hands-on learning and structured practice, students will develop workplace habits such as communication, teamwork, organization, problem-solving, as well as responsibility. Our goal is to ensure every student gains foundational skills that will support future career readiness and successful transition into their adulthood. The Social Development and Career Instruction course for grades nine through 12 is designed to help students strengthen essential life and work readiness skills as they prepare for adulthood. The class combines social development with practical career instruction focusing on communication, self-advocacy, and decision-making, problem-solving, and responsibility. Students will engage in hands-on learning, workplace simulations, and community-based experiences that build independence and confidence. Instruction emphasizes career exploration, employability skills, and the development of daily living skills that support long-term success. The goal is to equip every student with the knowledge and experience needed to transition smoothly into post-secondary opportunities, employment, and adult life. Are there any questions?
Do board members have questions at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the two new courses as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second that we would approve the two new courses as requested. Ms. Stevens, would you call for the vote?
Dr. Rollins Bells?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Having the motion carries, the two new courses will be added as requested, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to new business, school board member comments.
I think we had one more, Mr. Taylor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mudd.
It's my favorite part, don't miss it.
That's right.
I was thinking about eating, you know how I am about food.
Mr. Kelly, if you'd like, I'm happy to read through them all again tonight if you want. I'll leave that up to you. We're good? Okay. Good evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. Last month, I presented a number of policies to you for first read. There have been no changes since last presented, and tonight, we're seeking approval of policies as presented.
Okay, are there questions regarding the proposal or the requests?
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of the V S B A policies as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second that the, um, courses be approved as presented. Uh, Ms. Stevens, would you call for the vote?
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye. And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now that takes us to, uh, school board number comments, and maybe we'll start at this end this time, uh, we'll start with our school board representative from the high school.
I don't like that you're putting me on the spot like that. I'm nervous now.
You're good, you can handle that.
Well, first of all, uh, unrelated, Ms., uh, Mr. Fortune, I love your pen. I've been looking at it all night. I love that pen. But, anyway, I have a few things, and I wrote them down so that I wouldn't forget. But, well, first of all, um, Dr. Neighbors and I have been planning, we have been calling my listening tour around Caroline County and just getting to talk with like, all the elementary schools in the middle school and like their student leadership, and just kind of getting an idea and starting planning for my student platform, which I'm sure you guys all know what that is, but in case anyone doesn't, it's basically, I choose an issue that affects our students and research about it for my time here as the student representative on the school board, and just come up with how we can improve it for the students going on. Mr. Kelly, if that sounds familiar, it sounded familiar to me too. But, so, as, as we start settling in with the new school year, we have introduced a new thing at the high school during Cav Block with the Leader In Me program, which is, I'm trying, sorry. Basically, a program that is teaching students more about leadership and taking, like really taking charge in their education and building a future and thinking about what, my favorite saying, beginning with the end in mind. And so, the Cav Block schedule basically looks like Mondays, we are setting goals for the week and just goals for ourself, and then Wednesday is a check-in where usually you pick a person and you meet with them, and you're just like, here's what I've been doing, here's how I'm getting, moving towards my goals, and just a check-in of like where, where you're at. And then Friday, if I remember correctly, is just a reflection of the past week and how those goals are going and whether or not you've been able to meet those goals, which has been very helpful for me as someone who struggled a lot with just managing myself. And I'm sure it's helped a lot of other students to have that accountability to really, really take charge of our own, our, our own, like, building that leadership that is just so helpful. And another thing, to shout out Dr. Calverick again, I am gonna have the pleasure next week to come with her to a superintendent forum and get to introduce her, which I'm very, I'm very excited for. So that's next week, the seventeenth, if I'm not mistaken. And my last thing, Ms. Bolts is not here anymore, but I would like to shout out the National Art Honor Society, who this past, the past, I want to say last week, we actually painted the football field in preparation for football season starting, and so now, the football field has a nice, pretty logo on it with the Cavalier logo. Don't look too close in the left end goal, it's a little uneven. That was my fault, I did that one. Don't look too close, it's uneven. But yeah, that's it.
Thank you very much. Dr. Hubbard?
Uh, well, um, football season. I don't know any Dallas Cowboy fans out there, but anyway.
Go Bears.
Oh, boy. I don't want to start anything up here. Let me, uh, begin by publicly thanking, uh, Dr. Calverick for helping me prepare for the roundtable, uh, discussion I had with several businesses in Fredericksburg about the high-quality work-based learning, um, policies. It went well, uh, and your comments actually, um, were very beneficial, a lot of folks weighed in on it, so thank you. The second, uh, I really wanted just to comment once again on the collaborative nature, uh, in which we attacked the, um, learning Villas. Again, I think that's a, a true testament of what can be done when we all are on the same mission, and we're focused in on that. So I, I commend everyone that's, uh, involved with that. My last item, uh, I really appreciate, uh, our leadership team for the discussions that we had earlier this evening about, uh, achievement, uh, scores, and I know full well that we are going to get, uh, a more detailed brief, uh, later on, so I, I welcome that. But I would ask, um, that we do pay attention to some of those, uh, comments that I think collectively we had with regards of, um, uh, scores and, and achievement, knowing full well that we've got a great deal to be proud of on what has been accomplished over the course of the last several years. But we will not rest on our laurels. Uh, we recognize that we have, uh, miles to go before we rest, and, um, I, you know, and will support whatever is necessary to get us to where we want to get to. And I really look forward to that formal presentation that, uh, you all are going to give us later on, so thank you and, uh, thank, uh, your staff. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hubbard. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I will be very brief, uh, brief with my comments. First, Jay, I can't take credit for, um, the taste of picking out this particular pen. Um, I just must give a shout-out, uh, to, uh, Sam Anderson, um, for providing these pens at one of our wonderful V S B A professional development opportunities. So, um, since you admire this pen so much, I would definitely like for you to, to have it as a, as a, uh, present, uh, for joining our board. Um, the only other comment I would like to make, uh, Mr. Chair is to thank, uh, Reverend Keenan Thomas, the pastor of Shallow Baptist Church, New Sight in Fredericksburg, um, and their officers and members for, um, the invitation to join and to fellowship in their Educator Encouragement Sunday, uh, which was an event, uh, that brought educators and leaders, uh, from Caroline, Stafford, Spotsylvania, Fredericksburg, and King George, uh, as a way of encouraging, uh, educators throughout our region as we, uh, continue to do the great work in our, um, separate school divisions. Um, we received words of encouragement and inspiration from Dr. Princess Moss, who was the, who is the Vice President of the National Education Association. Now, so once again, uh, kudos and thanks so much, uh, for, uh, the hospitality, uh, exhibited to all of us, um, by the family of, uh, Shallow Baptist Church, New Sight. Those concludes my comments. Uh, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Fortune. Go ahead, Doc.
Um, I have brief comments, and I just want to say, um, I loved your quote, Jay. We're on the same page, start with the end in mind. Um, and I love to hear the feedback from that student perspective about what's happening in Cav Block, because it sounds like we're teaching, um, our students how to develop their mind and how to think about thinking, and so thank you for that, um, and I look forward to hearing more from you. Also, wanted to just again publicly say thank you to our team, um, for this trailer, the, the Villa project. It's not a trailer, it's the Villas. And, uh, I know that that was a lot of work, it does not go unnoticed, and I think a part of that success was the prep work in the beginning, and allowing subject matter experts to be subject matter experts and, and playing our position. And with that, I just wanted to tie it back to Mr. Fortune's opening comments. Again, one of my favorite quotes, coming together is the beginning, keeping together is progress, and working together is success. And I know I'm tough when I don't think that is right, but I also want to give kudos when we do it well, and so thank you to the team and for everyone who had a part in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Sears?
Good evening. We're a month into school, and I, as a parent, have been super busy. I have been watching a lot of our Caroline, uh, fall sports teams in action so far, from football to band to field hockey and cross-country. And I just want to say congratulations and continued good luck to all of our fall athletes as the season continues. And I also want to say thank you to all of our coaches and our volunteers and our parents who do so much for our students, from, you know, coaching them in, in the sport to, you know, giving donations when the students need things, from parents cooking meals for the teams that need it, driving everywhere. It is a, it's a huge effort, and I'm very thankful, um, that we have such committed, um, coaches and volunteers and parents helping out our students. Jay, I also wanted to commend the Art Honor Society on the fabulous, um, field painting. It looked really great, um, at the game, and thank you to Ms. Bolts for being in charge of that. And I also have heard excitement from some middle schoolers about the start of the clubs that are happening here at, um, the middle school. Um, a lot of them have, friends have said that they're really excited to try something new, or to, you know, oh, this sounds cool, I'm gonna give it a shot. So thank you to our activities director, Mr. Clark here, and for all the club sponsors. I actually have had no committee meetings, we have our first Commonwealth, um, governor's school board meeting next week, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Sears. Mr. Kelly?
Uh, thank you. We, we talked tonight about looking at data, uh, and what does the data say, we, you know, in our work session, and I just encourage the board and the staff, when we're looking at data to, um, look for information and not confirmation, there's gonna be, always be implicit bias with this, like I tell my students, be careful when you're watching the news, because you start looking for things that you want to see instead of what's actually out there. I think as many lenses as we can get to view that information, the, the better off we're gonna be. Fall sports are underway, is it, is it, I think we have to seriously ask ourselves, is it time to get a new scoreboard that has more numbers available on it? Holy moly. Mr. Mudd, thank you so much for that presentation tonight, and I, sincerely, because I'm used to seeing like the eighty-four slides, so it was nice to open that up and see three. So that, thank you very much. Um, no committee or, uh, comments yet. In regards to the Villas, um, it is not a forever plan, um, it is a placeholder until, we'll leave that unfinished. Um, I think Bowling Green is, if I'm not mistaken, I want to check, because I think except for Madison and for Western Caroline, I think all four of the other districts all have students that go to Bowling Green, correct? So I think that's like, yeah, I know yours do.
I would say yes.
Yeah, and so that, it's kind of a, it's a unique situation where four-sixth of our board is truly vested in the outcome at Bowling Green Elementary School. Because I know for Allison and myself, all of our kids, all of our students go to, um, Lewis and Clark, and I know Calvin, some of yours also go to Madison as well. But Bowling Green, really, it's almost like, uh, it's just, it just hit me tonight that, I was looking at that picture, and I was thinking, myself and Allison had to go to the, we had to work during the ribbon-cutting ceremony, and I thought, it's very appropriate that the four board members who have that vested interest in that elementary school were all there. So, it is a hot-button issue. It, it is not a long-term solution for that, and I hope that we collectively, with the board of supervisors, can continue to work together. Lastly, this is the time of year that it, the grind starts to hit, the newness wears off, and, and we, we've got to keep our nose to the grindstone and keep doing what is best for our students and keep the main thing the main thing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. I, I would just like to close, uh, the board comments by saying, as I always do, thank you for all that you do. We have a great staff of people who do a great job, and we can't say thank you enough for what you do. I have been in and out of the schools, uh, and I don't go into the schools to look for something wrong. I go into the schools to look for the positive things that are going on there. And every school that I have been in, I've seen positive things. And I think that one of the main things that I like is the climate. There is a climate in our schools. When you go in, uh, people seem to be happy, they seem to be doing their job. Now, don't get me wrong, we, we always had those times when we have to deal with things that are not, um, what we would like to be dealing with, but those things don't cloud the major time that we spend in our buildings. Most of the time, um, it's positive, and we appreciate that. We appreciate that because of the staff and because of the students and the parents that we have. So again, I, I can't say thank you enough for that. The other thing I would remind you is, uh, this Sunday, I believe, Shallow Baptist Church in Bowling Green, uh, they are sponsoring a leader's, um, service, I guess you might call it, and they have invited the leaders of the county, uh, certainly those of us who are elected, uh, they've invited, uh, and certainly appointed people as well. But people who are looked upon as, uh, community leaders, they invited us to come and to, uh, worship with them on Sunday. And I believe they did it last year, and if, uh, my memory is to be correct, most of us, uh, were there. And I do plan to go, I, I plan to represent, uh, the Caroline County School Board. I would like to thank the Vice Chair for attending in Fredericksburg, uh, and representing the school board there. Anytime there is, um, a program or something that, uh, serves to recognize, Caroline County will be there, because we want people to know that Caroline County is up and coming. We're doing great things in Caroline County, and we have some great students, some great adults, some great staff, just some great people in general. And we're doing great things, and I just hope that we can continue, I'm, I'm sure we will. And having said that, I will, um, give our superintendent an opportunity to give her comments.
Thank you so much. This evening, I'm going to share a quick top ten with you. Number one, September is attendance awareness. You miss school, you miss out. That is the motto of Madison Elementary School. Of course, if you are under the weather, keep your germs at home, otherwise, we look forward to welcoming your smiling face. Number two, shout-out to Ms. Stephanie Sadler. Ms. Sadler is a homegrown Carolinian who is breathing life into our Teachers For Tomorrow program. She invited central office staff and a number of educators at C H S to join her, uh, introduction to, um, early childhood class to sit and hear presentations of A B C flip books that the students had created. What a joy and bucket-filling event on Friday. I just wanted to, um, share that because she attended a project-based learning, P B L Works training over the summer in partnership with the A T I Lab School at University of Mary Washington, who we send ten of our students to. And so that partnership is reaping many rewards, um, beyond what our student experience is. Number two, or excuse me, number three, uh, please join us on September twenty-seventh from nine AM to one PM at C M S for a fun, inclusive family event with games, activities, touch truck, community partners, and more. This is called Together We Shine, and so there are so many resources available for our families, please come on out. Again, September twenty-seventh, nine to one at C M S. Number four, on the Tuesday, I think, the twenty-third, someone fact-checked my date, uh, we have our first quarter parent advisory here at the middle school from five-thirty to seven. Even if you are not formally a parent advisory committee member, these meetings are open. If you're interested in the topic of the evening, please feel free to join us. That meeting will cover facilities and growth, so if that is on your radar and you want to get an update, we also invited Leon Hughes from the county to attend that meeting as well, and hopefully we'll hear back from him in the near future, and he will be able to join us that night. will be able to join us that night. There is also a parent survey out right now to, um, identify the topics for the second, third, and fourth quarter. So, parents, if you have a hot topic you want us to cover, please fill that survey out. It is available through the nineteenth. Number five, Wednesday, September tenth is World Suicide Prevention Day. Let's all show kindness, being a good friend, and standing together to remind each other that in our schools and in our community, no one stands alone. We're going to do that by wearing yellow. So, please sport yellow on Wednesday. Number six, number six is, we are in the midst of a reju- rejuvenation of the Senior Citizen Gala. It is the twentieth anniversary of this event, and we are going big or going home. And so, we had a four-to-five-person committee last year, and it was few hands living hefty, heavy work. So, we're going for many ha- hands make for light work this year. And we now have members on our committee for Caroline County Public Schools, RACSB, YMCA, Caroline's Promise, Parks and Rec, VDH, Healthy Generations, Commonwealth Attorney, DSS, and community members. So, I'm so proud of the few of us that were able to garner traction. It's going to be bigger and better. It is December fifth here at the high school, and it is for seniors that are sixty and above. It is free. So, look for that registration coming soon. Number seven, number seven, it is athletic season. I do want to give a shout out to all of the families and all of the businesses that are feeding our athletes. That is really special. To see the amount of outpouring that is occurring to feed teams that are small and large. I have had two football players in my own personal household, and I know how much it takes to, uh, feed two of them, let alone a team of forty to fifty players. So, shout out to everyone that's participating in that process. Uh, moving on to number eight, October third is homecoming. I know that each of you wants to receive a foam spirit waiver. So, come to the game. It starts at seven o'clock and show your Caroline spirit. But even before that, from five to seven is our block party. So, come on out, meet and greet, talk to vendors, and just enjoy some Caroline collegiality in the parking lot before the game. Number nine, we are continuing to accept nominations for the inaugural Hall of Fame. This Hall of Fame is accepting applications through September nineteenth. The application is on our website under the community tab. We currently have ten nominations. Let me repeat that. We have ten nominations. We're doing athletics only, which was a decision the committee made for the inaugural year, but every year thereafter, we will do three E pathways as well to recognize the many gifts and talents in our community. So, get your nominations in by September nineteenth. And finally, number ten, we are so excited to show our support for the Caroline Ruritans Club, who is hosting their annual fish fry this Thursday. There are twelve CCPS principals and central office staff joining the Ruritans either to volunteer or just to mix and mingle. So, it's from five-thirty to seven-thirty at Caroline Little League, and this Ruritan donates every single year to the Caroline Education Foundation. So, we're really excited to return the favor, um, with great visibility and good food and, and good camaraderie. With that, I yield the floor.
Thank you very much. Um, again, appreciate all that's done and all of the help that we receive from all sides. Uh, that takes us now to our closed session, and I will seek approval for, um, the entering the closed session. Uh, I moved to enter in the closed session for the superintendent's personnel agenda, for the discussion of appointments, stipends, non-renewals, resignations, retirements, leave-of-absence, military leave, corrections, position change, hourly, and substitutes as authorized by the Virginia Code two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-A-three.
Some of.
Been moved in proper a second that we would go into the, to executive session.
Point of order.
I'm sorry.
Who is the second?
Second.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's been moved in proper a second that we would go into the, um, executive session, uh, as requested. Um, Ms. Stevens, would you call for the vote?
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fowles?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Sears?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye. And the motion carries. We are now in executive session.
I move for a coming out of closed session.
Second.
Okay, just call for the vote.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Wells?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye. And the motion carries. Uh, need a motion to, um, to certify that we only discussed those things that we went into executive session to discuss.
I so certify.
I so certify.
I so certify?
I so certify.
I so certify.
And I so certify. Alright, now we need a motion to approve the superintendent's personnel agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in proper second that we approved the superintendent's personnel agenda as presented. Um, Ms. Stevens, would you call for the vote?
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Wells?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye. And then we need to move to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.